Are you ready?
Yes.
All right, I get it. Aloha, Kako. Welcome to the Julio Oak Kalaniaki Neighborhood Board. We will, our meeting will now come to order. I want to thank you all for being here during this busy time. Your being here shows your commitment to the community and and I thank you as for representing your community. So, um, I want to, we, we have people, okay, we're gonna be, this is our, only our first, our second time meeting in person at the Aina Aina Library. And, um, we are just so lucky to, to be able to use it. And I want to thank Hawa'i Lucas for her help in finding the library and getting us signed up here. We're going to continue meeting via hybrid format for, for those who cannot come in person. So you can see on the screen who else we have, um, who's going to, who are going to participate. And we always start with our first responders. So let us go ahead and get reports from them.
They can't hear any.
Oh, they, can they hear me?
I, I, I was saying.
Yeah, you can close the door. Anything else? Honolulu Fire Department, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, great, okay. Hi, Captain Miyashita.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Please go ahead and give your report.
Okay, hi, Captain Gavin Miyashita, Wailuke Fire Station, Engine 23. Um, this are statistics, statistics for the month of November. We had four activated alarms, uh, 30 medical alarms, one mountain rescue, one ocean rescue, and one hazardous materials incident. We have the fire safety tip of the month, which is, uh, feels like holiday decorations. It says, uh, carefully decorating your home can help make your holidays safer. Ensure decorations are at least three feet from heat sources and do not block the exits. If you choose to use natural trees, um, ensure that it's watered regularly. As trees dry out, they become more and more flammable. Be careful with electrical decorations. Ensure that they are used in accordance with the manufacturer's instructions. Always turn off Christmas tree lights before leaving home or going to bed. And always keep candles, matches, and lighters securely out of reach of children. Remember to blow all candles prior to leaving home or going to bed. That is it from us. Any questions?
All right, um, does anyone have questions for Honolulu Fire Department? Okay, I don't see any questions, Captain. Thank you so much and, and for, um, the rest of your crew for, for all the wonder, for taking care of us this year and, um, and for, for being on duty during the holidays, which I know is, is even a crazier time for you. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you, thank you, folks. Happy holidays, everybody.
Take care, stay safe. Next, may we have the report from the Honolulu Police Department?
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the month of November, we had three motor vehicle thefts, uh, six burglaries, seven theft cases, and four unauthorized entry to motor vehicle cases. Total calls for service for the month of November is 6,161 calls. And the safety tip for this month is, uh, driving in rain, as it's been pretty, pretty rainy the past few, few weeks. Um, allow for more travel time. Um, when you plan to drive at a slower pace, this allows you more time to get there when the roads are wet. Um, brake earlier with less force than you would normally. Not only does this increase the stopping distance between you and the car in front of you, it also lets the driver behind you know that you're slowing down. When driving in, in, uh, rainy weather, stay toward the middle of the road as, uh, the puddles tend to, um, build up on the, on the edges of the road. And, uh, stay on top of your car's conditions, brakes, tires, tire pressure, um, tire tread depth, uh, and windshield wipers should be checked to make sure that they are, um, up to par, especially when driving in, uh, bad weather. And there's other tips involved with this, so you can find it on honolulupolice.org. That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you very much. Does anyone have questions for the Police Department? I'm hearing none. I have a question for you, sir. Um, if the community would like to hear a presentation about things that they can do to improve safety in the community, for example, um, to hear about the, um, community, let's see, the Neighborhood Watch and Citizen Patrol. Is there someone, um, who would you recommend that I contact?
Um, if it's the District 7 Community Policing Team will coordinate that kind of, that kind of things. Neighborhood security and, um, um, neighborhood patrols.
Okay, great. Uh, how do I contact you?
Um, you can call the D7 Command Office, uh, our number. I don't have it offhand.
Is it 7233369?
Yes, it is.
7223369, 723369. Thank you. All right, thank you, Vicente Thompson.
Pardon? Stephanie, it's a question.
Okay, oh, we have, um, a question from Sherri Spangler. Go ahead, Sherri.
Thank you. Um, yes, Officer, um, we have the Honolulu Marathon coming up this Sunday. And I've noticed that I'm in one of the Oceanside Communities on Kalanioli Highway, the Makai side. They don't, they have not yet put up a sign that says that after a proper interval, the police will let us through and out. That sign isn't up this year. So what instructions have your police officers been given? Because all the sign says now is the, the first sign saying, uh, expect delays. And we don't want the police to lock us in our neighborhoods till 1 o'clock in the afternoon because they have people walking back from Hawaii Kai with their backpacks on.
Correct, so they'll, they'll allow the cars through, um, when the openings in the, in the marathon allows the cars to go through safely. So at certain parts of the marathon, it's, the, the pack is really thick, so it, there is some time. And you just have to be patient, but there'll, there'll be a time when there's a little bit of space where the officers, most at intersection will walk the cars through to get to the other side of the, um, the highway.
The store. Are you going to be down there?
I'll be working that day. I won't be working the marathon as part of the marathon detail, but I'll be on the patrol side of it on Sunday.
Who do we call when the police officer won't let us out? When there are breaks in the marathon, in the runners?
Uh, you can call 911.
911?
No, that doesn't work.
I, have you had experience with the Honolulu Marathon?
Yes, I have.
Down on Kalanioli Highway where the people are locked into their neighborhoods on the Oceanside?
Yes, I have.
And are you aware that the police officers don't let us out even when there are gaps and breaks in the runners?
Um, they should be allowing the, the, the drivers through when there's gaps.
Can I quote you on that?
Yeah.
I'm serious because I'm telling you, it's just a huge problem. And I've had people, doctors needing, needing to get out and dentists who had emergency calls and people who had emergen, you know, sick calls, and they won't let people out. And it's a very serious problem. And the paper hasn't even talked, they have a new thing this year. They vaguely discussed that they're going to have different times of people running later than the 5 o'clock in the morning. So I don't know if that's going to make the, the, the closure. I don't know if, I don't know if it's just going to be contained in Waikiki or if they're going to have longer people walking and then, you know, running and then walking out on Kalanioli Highway because they have staggered the departure times. Are you aware of that?
I, I was not aware of that.
Yeah, it's a new thing.
Owning to abilities.
I, I've, I've always suggested that if you can park your car across the street on the Ma'aka side. It, it, I mean, I know it's, it's just a suggestion to make things a little bit easier to get, if you need to get your car out, you can just walk across the street and then you're able to drive out from the Ma'aka side a lot easier than it would be from the, uh, Makai side.
The people who do that get their cars broken into, so that's not an option. It sounds good, but in, in actuality, in working it, doesn't work well. We just need to let, have the police let us out. And we don't know what the instructions were from the marathon because now there's the second sign that normally goes up saying that we could point to it. It, it's just a very bad situation. And I'm upset this year because I, you know, it's only, they've only just put the signs out and they've neglected to put the second one out. Okay, we won't beat it to death, but people all call me and say, what are you going to do about it? I mean, people from all over the community, not just in Neighborhood Board Number Two.
Yes, if I can interject, the marathon, they do have a, they do have a designated dispatcher. And they have, they have their own, they just like their own command staff.
Do you want a number for that?
Uh, if you call 911, you'll, it'll, it'll filter to the marathon officer working the marathon, yes. And they have their own dispatcher and they're, they just, they can dispatch those calls to the marathon.
He's totally ignorant to this. You've got to tell them.
Okay, I don't think it's going to work that way. It doesn't, has never worked that way before. But you say this time, if we call 911, we're going to get through to the marathon people?
Just, just let them know that your, your complaint is that you're in the marathon and then the, the calls will go out to, filter to the marathon officers.
Will you let me say something?
Um, I guess we'll just have to talk to our councilman too because I just, it's a problem. And it is, anyway, thank you very much. Thank you.
Tim Thompson, thank you for trying to answer the question. It's a chronic problem, um, and I think it's very irritating to the residents at the very least. Hey, um, have a happy holiday and please stay safe yourself. And thank you so much for
You as well.
Police Department are, are doing for our, our community. Um, next on the agenda is Board of Water Supply. Is Christian Verzusimoto there?
Uh, yeah, I'm here, Chair.
Oh, hi, hi.
Hi, hello everyone. Um, I'm Chris Verzusimoto from the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. Uh, before I give this report, let me share my screen. Okay, perfect, so, uh, the main break report from last month. There were two water main breaks. The first one was on November 13th. It was a eight-inch cast iron pipe and the address was 385F Haleloa Place. And the second one was on November 29th. It was a 12-inch cast iron and the address was 5246 Kalanioli Highway. So the general water announcements, uh, this month's topic is about our 2024 BWS calendar. You can pick up a copy of the Board of Water Supplies 2024 Water Conservation Calendar side the BWS Public Service Building at 630 South Bertandis Street. The calendar features, uh, winning posters and poems from last year's contest and reminds us of the importance of water conservation all year long. So for more information on the contest, you can visit our website at www boardwatersupply.com/wcwcontest. That's the end of my report. Does anyone have any questions or comments for BWS?
Any questions or comments for B, Board of Water Supply? Thank you very much, Christopher, and, and, um, may you have a wonderful holiday and have a chance to relax and that the department doesn't have too many water main breaks.
Hey, mahalo, everyone.
All of them. Take care, see you next year. Okay, we, we will now go on to board business. Our main item today is filling board vacancies. In order for us to, to help our community and to conduct, uh, business, we need at least nine board members to be present and able to vote. We have, and we do have nine today. So we have seven vacancies and I'm happy to announce that two candidates for, for two of our sub-districts are here with us tonight. Tim, may I start with you? All right. Um, so I'd like to introduce Tim Stanton, who's in Subdistrict 3, Waileke Bridge. Um, Mr. Stanton, um, you can come on up. Actually, we, if you would like to, oh, okay. We'd like to, um, allow people to hear you through the mic. Oh, that'll work. Okay, great. Tell us a little bit about yourself and, um, why you'd like to join the Neighborhood Board.
Always been involved in community in which I live.
I don't know if they can hear you. Maybe we can move the, uh,
This is the mic?
Yeah, that's towards you. And then, right now, you're, you're in the projector thing, but if you pull that, yeah.
That should be okay now?
Yes, go ahead.
High technology. Okay, I grew up in England, so I'm superior. Remember in 1776, you didn't win, we lost. So throughout my career and life, hopefully, um, I have a sense of humor. Not that everybody can understand it. I grew up in London. My first degree was to be an artist, to chase women and drink. Uh, that didn't work out too well, so I became an industrial designer. My last degree was a doctorate in educational psychology. So my true background love is education. So I became the youngest deputy principal of a radical college in England. Uh, there were no classrooms and no subjects. Team teaching, it was completely radical. Uh, I, I was approached by the Australian government on behalf of Papua New Guinea. Uh, long story short, I ended up in Papua New Guinea for 11 years as the curriculum development officer. And I'm pretty sure I learnt more in Papua New Guinea than I was able to impart. Um, I ended up with four department stores in partnership with Michael Samari, who was the Prime Minister. And then I arrived here as a single parent in 1983. My children were three and six. I taught at UH, I taught at Midpac. Again, education is the theme. Um, I have a gorgeous, beautiful wife. I say new, it's like 40 years now. We have three new children, the eldest, which unfortunately passed away. Good place to meet people. She is a musician, so we began a Um, at the beginning of COVID, our numbers at 250 drastically dropped, obviously, to 125 and we thought we were going to go back to a home-based industry. Students, excuse me, of all ages from five. That's it?
No, no, that's not it.
Why'd you shut me up?
No, no, no. Well, why would you, um, what would you like to see the Neighborhood Board do more of? You have a fant, a very interesting background and, 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 um, are certainly going to be a wonderful voice for your community and, and help us to get the word out and, and, and maybe turn around the COVID disaster to Neighborhood Boards and, and, and bring us in 200 community members to our meetings. But no, I mean, um, um, aside from
Wherever I've lived, it's obvious we live not in a vacuum. And we're all interdependent on each other somehow, some way. And I think that's the theme I'd like to present to the members here tonight. That we are all part of a community. In some extent, I don't take this flippantly, but whether we like it or not, we're all part of a community. And as such, I think it's good that a community work together rather than somebody, I mean, we've all got neighbors and some of us don't even know our neighbors after 30 years. That's life. We can't avoid that. Uh, the other side of it, of course, there's no offense to you here. Wherever I've lived, there's always people, oh, you know, they're just a bunch of busybodies. But the busybodies in some way make the community vibrant. And that's what I hope to do.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Tim? Okay, well, actually, why don't you stay there for a moment? Um, before I go on, are there any other candidates for, for?
Sherri had a question.
Oh, Sherri, okay. Go ahead, Sherri.
Thank you.
Sherri.
The sound, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, the sound was going in and out. It was very interesting. I'm sorry I missed half of what, what Tim said. Tim, I just wanted to know, was there any one particular issue that introduced you to the concept of the Neighborhood Board that made you want to join?
Involvement and obviously our strong thing is education and nurturing, um, future generations. Speaking for myself, we're all getting on in age and we all need to be replaced one way or another. Some people have a funny idea, I'm sure, of what a Neighborhood Board is, what it does and what it can do. I'm pretty sure there's a lot that we can do. And that would be, but this is not an individual thing. It's a coming together of people and in my opinion, that makes us stronger.
Thank you very much. I move, we nominate Tim Stanton to the Board of Directors, uh, Neighborhood Board.
Subdistrict 3.
Subd- district, seven?
Three.
Three, seven, let me start that again. Oh, Shelley, I say again. Okay, okay, thank you. I got the shift. All right, we will now vote on electing Tim Stanton to the Neighborhood Board representing Subdistrict 3. Um, we will do this by roll call, so, um, um, Zoe Delk, would you run the roll call?
So when you do, um, when I call your name, please say, um, Tim. Tim's name.
You vote?
Chair, we have a question. Um, I'm not too clear, the, the board area, because I'm supposed to be director.
Oh, I'll Okay, now I'll show you. It's on the, um, on the back of the agenda, but I can show you later. But you live in the district.
Okay.
Okay, um, do you, can I have your, I thought I thought it was, um, it was a sub-district 3.
He's on Paola Street. Paola. So when I said Waileke Bridge, the beat that is all cocky and Just verifying residents in sub-district. There we go.
You're on that street, right?
Yeah.
Sub-district.
Yeah. Sub-district. Okay, so, again, we have, um, we are going to vote for Tim Stanton for Subdistrict 3.
Okay, Hal?
You're not?
Tim, okay.
Okay.
Partner?
Stanton.
Arisa?
Mr. Stanton, Tim?
Alvin? Tim? Yeah, you do have to say his name, okay. Shelley? Janine?
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 Aye.
Aye.
Kawi?
Tim?
Elani? Hey, Elani?
No, she's
She's on.
Oh, she's on the Oh, she's on. Hey, Elani? Let's come back to her. Okay.
Sherri?
Aye for Tim Stanton.
So, hey, Elani? Just message her. Okay. There you go. Hey, Elani?
Hi, yes, um.
Tim?
Thank you.
Thank you, Elani.
Okay, so we got nine, so.
Okay.
So we do have one more, so hope.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, Tim? Okay.
So, um, You're welcome. And we will have a, um, a formal swearing in at the end.
I get to swear?
And it's approved too?
Did we get to go up to the big table now or?
Let's complete them.
Okay, so
You want, I can give him his we can take a short recess to actually swear in.
No, well, we have, um, we also have Bill Killcoin. We're going to, um,
So you have more, um, more people to actually be
Yes, so we'll have, hopefully, two swearing ins.
Yeah, so if you can actually get Tim on right now, that's an additional to your, um, voting.
Okay.
So you, you'll have
Oh, okay, whatever you recommend.
Yeah, because if
If Elani jumps out or
Yeah.
Yeah, because my plane's coming pretty soon, so
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to be boarding, but I, I'll stay on as long as I can, thanks.
Okay, mahalo. Okay, so should Tim come stand up, come back up?
Yeah, and Tim, can you, I'll do a, um, just take a short recess.
Why do we have to recess? Just do it.
Because it's not an issue.
Okay, so
This is, it's a one-minute recess. Just call it a
We will take a one-minute recess to swear in Tim Stanton. Bathrooms are right back here. But I like to stay here for, for swearing ins because it's it is an important No, just very, um,
Thank you, everybody.
We expect a lot of you.
I'm on a diet. I told you, you're the sense of humor.
I tell you, you're the sense of humor.
Okay, um, this meeting is called back, is called to order. And proceeding with board business. Um, I'm happy to announce that Bill Kilcoin, who's a former member of our Neighborhood Board. It is volunteering for, um, for, for more trouble. So Bill, for people who don't know you, can you please tell us a little about yourself and why you want?
Yes.
Yes, where we can, where everyone can see you.
I think it's better.
I need to borrow his shirt because that was pretty nice. Hi, everyone, I'm, uh, Bill Kilcoin. I was on the board for many years. But we went from meetings like this, which I really like. To going on the computer and computer screen. So when my term was over, I did not sign up again. So that's why I was on the board for about five years and really enjoyed it. So hopefully I can convince you to let me back on. Um, I'm glad he doesn't live in Aina Hina because I would have voted for him, uh, big time. It's pretty good. My twenty-seven years here, love the valley, love all of Aina Hina. It's a beautiful place. I do have some concerns. Uh, the crime is, is a big issue with me and, uh, it seems like a lot of the crime is coming east. So be careful. Uh, we had a lady mugged on Howe Street not too long ago. Unfortunately, she did not want to press charges, so you just gotta be careful. I live on the stream and we had several, uh, break-ins recently. And, uh, so I joined the Neighborhood Watch and we walk around with our little, uh, unis. And we're all senior, so we don't scare a lot of bad guys, but, uh, we are out there walking the neighborhood. Uh, conveying, uh, be careful, watch your house, watch your neighbors and stuff like that. The other big concern for me is the Wailupi Stream, which we bulldoze. Remove the rocks out of the middle and then we let it go to, uh, back to its state. We're not allowed to spray anymore, so the stream's a joke. Uh, it's a weed patch, in my opinion. And, um, until recently, April, they, they cleaned the stream. But it grew back within months and, uh, I brought up years ago, I think it's a fire hazard. Uh, there's water in the stream now, but prior to this, it was dry for several months, as you all know. And hurricane season is over, so, um, hopefully we're in the rainy season and we'll get some water back in there. But it's, it's a disaster, this stream. It's, so that's a big concern of mine. And I'm not real happy with the homeless. Seems to be coming our way more and more. And I think that's an issue we need to do. And last but not least, the speeding of our streets, guys. Driving way faster than they should, especially on Hind Drive. It's at five o'clock, it's like a race car, so. I think I bring a little experience, twenty-seven years in the valley. Maybe a sense of humor, which I've been told has been lacking a little bit. And, uh, um, nothing, huh? And, uh, I'd like you to consider me as a candidate.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Hi, what's subject, district is?
Six.
Two.
You're two.
Aina Hina.
You're two, yeah.
Aina Hina.
Let's make sure. Did you tell them what street you live on?
Oh, E O Drive.
Oh, E O.
Oh, I O. Yeah, I'm in District Two.
I think it's six.
It's not two.
It's six, Sub District Six.
Oh, I apologize.
We're Neighborhood Board Number Two. That's where you got the two.
I apologize.
Okay, Sub District.
But I am Aina Hina, uh, O E O Drive. Are there openings, I hope?
Yes.
Okay.
We get two.
That speech was for nothing, man.
I move, we vote on accepting Bill Kilcoin as Neighborhood Board Member for Sub District Six.
I second it. On the amount of two.
Yes.
Yes.
Guys taking charge already, I can't.
So, um, we will vote by roll call?
Right.
Go ahead, Zoe Delk.
Keal. Partner?
Yes.
Arisa.
Yes.
Calvin. Shelley. Janine.
Aye.
Kawi.
Bill.
Hey, Elani?
Yes.
Sherry?
Sherry Spangler?
Tim.
For Bill Kilcoin, major eyes.
Which one? Tim DeMello or Tim?
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, folks. See you later.
Do I shut recess?
We will now take a short recess to swear in Bill. Okay. I'll speak for those who don't know the layout for Aina Hina Library. There is a restroom right here.
Thank you. I'll share it with you.
They're both actually fish ponds, so I said that.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, my understanding that at least one of the others. One of them.
So it's, he's probably the only one that's not.
Well, I don't actually know them. Thank you. That's why at least one of them, at least one of ours looks like this. But it was a.
I'm going to follow them, um, meeting.
This meeting is now called back to order.
Later, yeah, because, yes.
Okay, the, um, our next agenda item is approval of regular meeting minutes. And now that we have enough board members to do this, we have a little catch-up to do, beginning with September seventh. And I will, I'll have to ask Janine to help us and she's our secretary and has, she corrected all the draft minutes. For, hopefully, um, everybody who's, who's been on the board before today has had a chance to look over them. Starting with September seventh, um, the minutes of the September meeting have been distributed. So, uh, my question is, are there any corrections to the minutes that, that anyone noticed? Janine, I believe you, you already did all the corrections. Okay, so, um, if there are no corrections, the September minutes are approved. Next, we need to approve the minutes for the October fifth meeting. They have been distributed. So are there any corrections that anyone has to the October minutes? That was October fifth. Okay, I don't see Janine raising her hand. So if there are no corrections, the October minutes, five minutes are approved. And, um, lastly, the November second meeting minutes have been distributed. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Okay, if not, the, um, if there are no corrections, the November two minutes are approved. And now they will go on the Neighborhood Commission Office website, um, as, as, um, our official minutes. So before that, um, members of the public could not see what we did in those last three months. And that, that's why it's important for us to, to approve them and have them visible to everyone. All right, announcements, there's a, um, community participation opportunity at Connie Y Spring on January twentieth. And if, yes, so I'll let Chris Kramer talk more about that, um, when he gives his presentation. Before we do that, are there, this is the section where, um, people, I mean, where their public, uh, input, public concerns that are not on the agenda that, that anyone may raise. Does anyone have concerns that they wish to raise? Go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, two comments, um, uh, about two weeks ago, the Aina Hina Community Association, it's nice enough to send out a information bulletin about a rain garden workshop at, um, uh, New Valley School. And, um, it was, uh, it was last Saturday and it was well-attended. There was a, um, two morning sessions and great displays, great information on free mats. So, and it was well-done and appreciate the Committee Association sending that out. Then the other comment, maybe a little bit of apology, I guess a few months ago, I had a mental breakdown when regards to the Aina Hina Community Association not welcoming me. But I, I realized that with two vacancies on the board, so one, one Aina vacancy is filled, but I think there's a vacancy on, on the board with Wailupi, which is part of Aina Hina, and I think there's still one vacancy for Aina Hina. We might kind of ensure, maybe encourage, maybe Jeanne Oda to, to join the board so that you, you have a forum on a more regular basis and then they could have a, a better voice, um, on the board.
Um, she has declined to join the board.
Okay.
But if you, if, and if you know people on the Wailupi.
That's here, who's another representative of, of the Aina Hina Community Association, so. I just, is a way where they could more actively participate with us.
Is anyone who would, who would like to come on, um, on the board, please let me know? Okay, we have, no, really consider. We would love to have. Okay, so we have some questions from the, from, from our hybrid audience, our virtual audience. Who is?
Malia.
Oh, um, Malia. Go ahead, Malia. Can't hear you.
Oh, Kalamai. Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, aloha, kakoa pau. My name is, um, Malia Marquez, mauna tua maio. I'm from Hawaii Kai. I am here to give an update on, from Pu'ohono'a Wailupe, we are the organization protecting our ancestral burial caves. Um, in Wailupe and, um, just a little, I'm sure my cohorts have already spoken about our AIS that has been completed this past summer. We are still waiting for Shipti. Uh, Shipti's approval, um, we've progressed in everything that we've been asked. We actually have been emailing, um, Clean Water Natural Lands, awaiting their correspondence, correspondence with us for our site inspection, which will take place, crossing fingers, on January fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Because we would like to speed up this process as everything has been set in place by our side. So it's basically just a waiting game, um, from the city and from these, um, from Clean Water as well as from Shipti. So it's, it's a waiting game, but monthly we are continuing, continuously cleaning the aina and taking care of our, um, burial caves. And that is our update. Hopefully January will have something significant to, um, to bring back to the table.
Mahalo. So, um, as far as you, so that it's still possible that the area may be developed? If you could just explain, um, what it is that you want to achieve when this is all over?
Um, so the achievement of, uh, Pu'ohono'a Wailupe is basically preservation. We are there to preserve the aina in which our ancestors are buried. Wailupe is filled with, filled with our ivi kupuna. And there, we do minimal, any minimal kind of work up there, just to make sure that, that aina is not disturbed. Our goal is for the city to purchase this land, which we have turned in all the significant, um, things through this application process. And we're basically waiting for the final, final push on being the stewards of this land that will be owned by the city in preservation. No development whatsoever.
Thank you. Mahalo.
Thank you, mahalo. Have a good night.
Thank you. Sherry, Sherry Spangler, please go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to request for, um, um, oh, actually, we're not going to meet in January, are we? We don't meet in January. Do we?
No, that's our recess.
Okay, can we put on the agenda for February, the Honolulu Marathon?
I agree.
Yeah, it's going to be an issue because they don't have the proper signage up now, so it's going to be a problem. Uh, we'll call nine-one-one as directed by the Lieutenant Thompson, who will cross our fingers. But we need to have it on the agenda and we need to discuss why they're not in communication with the communities that are so, uh, deeply affected by it. And why they're not doing the job that they initially, when they used to come to meetings, said they would deal with certain things, but they've stopped coming, they've stopped talking, they've stopped doing what they said they would do. And like I said, I get calls from people in the community as far away as Kalihii, so, you know, about the issue down here. So we'd like to have it on the agenda.
Okay.
And have someone from, uh, um, from the marathon that is high enough to give us some real answers. And real responsibility. Okay?
Great. Okay, hey, Sherry?
Yes.
Um, for a person who doesn't like using computers, I am surprised that you are not here in the room.
I, um, will be there in February. I hurt my hip, can't walk well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would have been there last month and I would have been there this month, but I will be there in February, definitely.
Don't point fingers.
No, I'm thrilled, I'm thrilled you're back. I meant to call and tell you.
Oh.
Must be the tango lesson.
What did you say?
Must be the tango lesson.
Oh, did you hear that?
Yes, I did. I'll tell you, you'll get a laugh when I tell you in private how I hurt my hip, but I'm better now, but I'll be much better in February. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Thank you for, for signing on with us, Sherry. Yes, Dave.
I speak in my personal capacity for a moment. So, uh, Dave Day, um, I'm a Kuleo resident. Uh, I say, and I would love to be here in February and to hear about Meriva because it's, uh, it is a difficult thing for somebody who's living on Kuleo like myself. And, uh, so I understand what Sherry is saying about the difficulties associated with the Meriva for people on the route. So, um, do you think I'm going to be here in February anyway? I'd like to hear that as well.
All right, right, look for you. So actually. Um, well, are there any other, um, any other community concerns, any, any questions that anyone wants to bring up? Before we go on to our officials' reports, because perhaps we'll go straight to Dave. Dave, you're already, you're already geared up?
I think John is actually.
Is John first? Oh, yeah, John wasn't, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, John, we got word that you weren't going to be coming. Hey, John, we got word that you weren't going to be coming, but I'm so glad to see you.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I just meant that I couldn't make it in person tonight. But I was going to join you guys online, because I know last, last time I did commit to, to trying to come more in person.
All right. Oh, well, well, thank you for taking the time to be here and represent the Mayor Blangiardi. Tell us what he, what, what news he has for us.
No problem. Actually, Mayor would like us to highlight his December newsletter, which has come out fairly recently. It has a full recap of the city's annual Honolulu City Lights opening night celebration. I'd hope to see you there, Cher. Plus, details on the holiday displays that will be up all month. Invite everyone to come down and check out the holiday displays and all the departmental Christmas trees. And just, it's a great festive atmosphere out there in the Civic Center campus downtown. Also, Kapolei City Lights is happening, if anybody wants to make the long trek west. Partner, it's a partner activity, Kapolei City Lights in our second city of Kapolei. In, also in Mayor's newsletter are updates on renovations to the Neo Blaisdell Center, especially highlighting, highlighting the Blaisdell Arena. I think also probably of note for this neighborhood board is a call to action for residents to weigh in on the Alawaye Canal Flood Risk Management Study Draft Report. And Mayor is also very proud to report some details on the city's improved municipal equity index rating. It's our highest ever score. It actually measures the city based on its levels of equity and inclusion. And there's more, all of this can be found in the Mayor's monthly newsletter online at www.honolulu.gov/mayor/newsletter. I only have one report for tonight, and unfortunately, it's not a complete report. At the last meeting, the, the board inquired, I believe, Kevin Mulcair, inquired about trash pickup for properties, including 5839, 5841, and 5975 Kalaniana Ole Highway, requesting trash receptacles and regular pickup. And we did forward this to Environmental Services. However, they're investigating and requested an extension. So we will be following up on this at the next meeting, which unfortunately will not be until February. If I may take a little bit of privilege, just listening to what the previous discussion was before I provided my reports. The Department of Transportation Services, my department, we actually permit large-scale street events such as the Honolulu Marathon. And we really value this input that we've heard from this board. And even in advance of a February meeting, please do call the Department of Transportation Services and do leave comments regarding even the, the upcoming closure for Sunday. I think we want to gather all the community input we can. And what I've heard here is, you know, dismaying. And I think, you know, we do want to make sure that the marathon organizers, organizers are aware of it and that they take appropriate action to mitigate or minimize the disruption to this, especially to the residents of this board.
Thank you, John. So would that be best introduced as, as a resolution from the board? Or would it be sufficient to have individuals like Sherri Spangler send in comments online? What do you think would be the most effective way to give input to, to the, to Transportation Services?
Um, I, I believe that we value the, the direct input from the residents. In that sense, I mean, especially because I think we're always trying to, in advance of the marathon, we would like to help the marathon or implore that the marathon do the best they can, recognizing their, their impact on neighborhoods. So I know it's happening Sunday. Perhaps there's not much that, in front of that we can do. But maybe if there are short-term things we can do just in the next few days, we would like to make sure the marathon's aware of that. So I'll tell you what, if anybody in the board would like to email me just for, like, any concerns upcoming before this Saturday, please go ahead and email me. My email address, I'll go ahead and put it in the chat, but it's my first initial last name. So it's j n o u c h i@honolulu.gov. And then I can forward that down to our street usage section that does the permits. But Cher, I would recommend that, you know, the board do, I mean, I know, I think you, you are planning on having this for discussion in February.
Sherri, I know you, you want to find out more about giving your input. Were you able to jot down John's email address?
Yes, I just did. I thank you. And John, I was wondering if DTS really wants to know what's going on. They can send a representative to incognito, just go and stand there. Come to the corner of Wailei and Kalaniana Ole Highway and just stand around and watch and see how they have organized it. And come in around 10 o'clock, when they're supposed to bring people out and see if they're actually doing it. One day, they had nobody guarding the, the exit of our neighborhood. It's one year, they simply had put barricades all across the street on both sides. And there was no one there except one guy on a Harley Davidson who was doing a boombox from 5:00 in the morning till 1:00 in the afternoon. Loud boombox. And, you know, we could take a lot of things, but a boombox, even with all your windows closed, I thought I was going to lose my mind. And we went out there and had a chat with him and he got upset because he said he was there to try and, you know, keep the peace and make things, make sure things went smoothly. And I said, yeah, but a boombox, I don't think the Honolulu Marathon really encourages that. And eventually, he, he got in a hissy fit and left. So he kind of just chose to be there. So I mean, it's kind of a rogue, it's become a rogue operation. And that's what I'm trying to communicate to you. Some years are better than others and some years are worse than others. But there's not a consistent, professional, sophisticated manner in running this thing. And I know how big it is to the city and to the state and the income and the PR, understand all that. But you've got tens of thousands of residents who are inconvenienced by it. And it is, it's unfair what they're doing. And to not let people out, especially when they're doctors with, you know, with IDs, trying to get to an emergency call and they're not let out and there's no one out there in the intersection. It's, it makes you just, makes your blood boil. So.
Thank you, Sherri. So I'm counting on you on putting your written input into DTS and to John's mailbox. And Tim Stanton has, has a suggestion as well.
I think maybe bring some sunlight on this.
Yes.
If we invite TV station to be there at 10 o'clock.
They wouldn't be able to get near it.
Yeah, I don't know if they, it's a good idea.
How would they get in there?
You just, you never know which year is going to be the worst, you know, it's differing standards each year. But I, I would think they might want to be there, except everybody's on board with the rah rah, you know, pom poms. We're so excited, we're so happy. They don't start to care that they're inconveniencing the neighborhoods.
Yeah, they're at Kapua Lani Park. Oh, that's a good idea. Shelley, did you have? Oh, okay. Go ahead, John.
Oh, no, Cher, I just wanted to be respectful. I, I, maybe I was a little bit out of order by opining on how we might address this ahead of the boards looking at it. But if there's anything we can do, if there's anything we can be aware of ahead of Sunday, I want to make our street usage crew very well aware of that and that we can send a warning, I mean, you know, you know, just a, a head up to the marathon organizers that this is, that this is available. And I, I'm sorry, I don't want to take up more time with this at the moment. But please do feel free to email me at the email I provided in the chat. And we can work on that.
John, I just, John, I'd love to think that you could get the marathon people to bring back the second sign that instructs the police to let people through and instructs the community to understand that with a little bit of time, they will let them pass through. That sign is no longer out there, at, at least at this point. They put out the big sign saying expect delays. But there, at community request years ago, they put out a big, huge orange sign explaining how the process was going to go and that the police would let people through after a certain period of time, when there was a break in the crowds. And they haven't put that sign out this year, and that's the first time. So if you could ask them to put it back and instruct the police to respond to that, that would be wonderful in advance, wonderful. So thank you.
Sherri, Sherri, this is Clarissa Burkard. I, I would like to, this is the chair. If I get ahold of someone at KHON2TV to, to consider coming and filming this, can I give them your name as a reference? Would you show them, you know, explain to them what you'd like them to, to document?
To 11 o'clock. Well, I guess so. I guess I'd have to. I don't like to do stuff like that, but I would do it. You know, it may be the year, maybe, maybe because you've talked about like that, maybe someone will find out and maybe they'll be on good behavior this year. But we would ask them to understand that it's a, it's a growing, constant, persistent situation. And yes, I guess we'd have to talk to someone about it. I just don't like being the front person.
Okay. No, well, we, you know, it, it can be very effective. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for, for supporting us and, and trying to make sure things run as, as, as well as possible. And we really appreciate everything that you, that you do for the neighborhood board. And thank you for representing Mayor Blangiardi. He's lucky to have you.
And best holidays to everyone.
Yeah, happy holidays to you. Take care and stay safe.
You too, Chair. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Okay, so we have, we are fortunate to have Governor Josh Green's representative here in person, Dave Day, also a, a member of our community. What could be better?
That was the first time I've ever blurted out anything at a meeting, just because I know the pain of the marathon as well. Somebody who lives on the, on the highway, albeit on the Malka side. So for, well, first of all, congratulations, congratulations for being on the board. So my name's Dave Day. I'm the Special Assistant to the Attorney General. I'm also Josh Green's representative here today. The, we had a bunch of questions last week, and I actually have a bunch of big fat documents for the record. So we had several questions about Red Hill last week. And I believe that Member Sonora Paulé is not here, but I'm happy to. Okay, yeah. So these were all her questions, I believe. But the questions regarding Red Hill, where what will happen after defuelling? There was some question about residual fuel and sludge. This is from Department of Health. The Navy is responsible to remove all fuel, residual fuel and sludge in their defuelling process. The Navy is also responsible for cleaning all the tanks after the removal of these items. The Red Hill defuelling plan can be found at this link. I'll show you the links in just a second. But I have a copy of this for the record. This is the Red Hill Bulk Fuel Storage Facility Defuelling Plan Supplement, which details exactly why it is that the Navy is going to be responsible for cleaning this up.
Is there a link to?
Yes, it's right here. It's rather long, so I was just going to maybe have it typed in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So with respect to the second question, there was an issue regarding whether or not any money would be allocated to BWS from the federal government, you know, with the Navy responsible. This is actually some recent news. The Department of Health obtained a $75 million grant, I believe, from the Environmental Protection Agency for use by the Honolulu Board Water Supply to increase the supply of safe, safe drinking water, specifically relating to the halaba shaft. In a recent news release, Governor Green stated, quote, "The BWS's decision to raise water rates by about 50% may create a hardship for many residents." It's important for the Board of Water Supply to take advantage of available funding to reduce the cost, the cost that passes on to Oahu residents. And I have links to a news release, a copy of it here, along with a letter sent by Josh Green to Ernie Lau of the Board of Water Supply notifying him of this $75 million grant. Number three, we had a question about what was tested for in the Red Hill facility. This is a very large document, which again, is, there's going to be a link to it. But this basically outlines everything that's tested in the Department of Health or by the Department of Health relating to Red Hill. And I'll, the link, the link will be provided in this. Finally, Resident Mulcair, this is also related to the same properties that John had spoken to earlier regarding the trash pickup. I was speaking to you a little bit about this earlier. I've spoken to, well, through the Governor's Office, the Department of Land and Natural Resources about specific properties where you noted that there were high, tall trees with coconuts, I believe, and that maybe presented a hazard. My understanding is that the address is in question. And we, I know that on the agenda today is the Mount Alua Fish Pond Heritage Center, 5975 Kalaniana Ole Highway, according to DLNR's Land Division, is owned by the Mount Alua Fish Pond Heritage Center. 5995 Kalaniana Ole Highway, which is adjacent to that property, is owned by DOT. But my understanding is that there's a right of entry granted to the Mount Alua Fish Pond Heritage Center from the Department of Transportation regarding the maintenance of this parcel. And so I understand that they're there and I'm happy to, if the Mount Alua Fish Pond Heritage Center has any questions for me, my email address is david.day@hawaii.gov. And I'm happy to sort of clarify, maybe Resident Mulcair could as well about the issues relating to coconuts. That is the answer to the questions. And I'm hoping to say anything that you might have.
I have Chris Kramer. Chris, are you online right now from Mount Alua Fish Pond Heritage Center?
Yes, I am. What's the question regarding coconuts?
Oh, no. This is, it's regarding the waste pickup, right?
Yeah, there was, actually, a little clarification.
Come on up, Kevin, and talk into the mic.
A little, little clarification, and I didn't realize the one fish pond was owned by the nonprofit group. I think that's great. The, the other site, Chris, that you were nice enough to give me the, the aquatic plant at, what, what is that address and what do you refer to that spring that, and that's closer to Neo Valley?
That's Kalau Hae Hae, Fish Pond.
Thank you very, very much. When I was.
The address, Chris, can you say the address?
5841 Kalaniana Ole Highway.
Yeah, when I was on site with you, you had mentioned your group at your, your own expense is taking care of all the coconut trees on the property. But then there's a no man's land between your property and the beach, where the state is, is actually owns several of the coconut trees that are loaded, that are hanging over the public beach, which poses a hazard, not just to the public, but also to your volunteers. And, and so that's what I was trying to get you some help on getting trimmed. Have they been trimmed since we were there last?
The state has not trimmed them on the state beach.
Okay.
This is on the beach.
Yes, thank you. That, that's what my, so I was just trying to get you a little help there. And then as far as the trash cans, obviously, having green waste pickup at a, a residence or a property owned by a nonprofit, probably not going to fly. But the property that Chris is taking care of, you, you have no idea how many, I have no idea, well, I have no idea how he can mobilize literally hundreds of volunteers of all ages to go in and pull weeds, to pull out seaweed, to take care of the place. And so just a little minimal thank you of having some cans and saying, we appreciate what you're doing, Chris, and we're going to haul that rubbish away for you. So that's what I was hoping for. Yeah, thank you.
So Dave, are you clear on that, the, the address for, that needs the cans, is that?
So I need to, I think it would be great if Chris could contact me so that maybe he could point to me exactly where it's needed, because all I had was the addresses. But yeah, I'd be happy to speak to him about if there's state land, that this is the no man's land that was spoken about. That's not something that I was told by Land Division, but I'm happy to look into that.
And then I had a question, please. So very good news about the $75 million from the US EPA. However, we know that the EPA is underfunded and has a lot to do. However, we know that the EPA is underfunded and has a lot to do. And that doesn't say anything about the Navy. What the, Haley's question was actually about the Navy. So is the Navy gonna be, uh, is the Navy gonna help pay for?
So I don't have, so I don't have that information. So basically, the information I was provided related to the EPA, if I'm not mistaken, and maybe John, if, if I'm not mistaken, I believe, so this is just kind of like what I had read in the news, and John is here. I believe that BWS filed suit against the federal government. Is that right, John?
Hey, John?
I read it in the news. I don't know. I thought it was something like, I read a figure like 2.2 billion dollars or something like that. Does that sound right?
I have a question because I had raised some of those the other week about the war, the whole concept of Hawaii being so dependent on natural resources. Before leaving Papua New Guinea, I was involved in huge bruhaha with Sunkist about bad harvesting. And it's still going on, and that's 40 years ago. So my question is, it's, in a sense, great to discuss this now, and maybe no disrespect to politicians, but in 10 years, 12 years, they're not going to be there. So what is the residual sort of thing in place to look after us all without drinking water 10, 15 years down the road?
So could you maybe clarify what you mean, like what, what would be looking after us?
Who's responsible?
For the drinking water?
For this whole thing with the Red Hill.
Okay, so I can give you a full list.
Is there a mechanism in place?
So I'll have to follow up on that. So basically, the mechanism for ensuring the safety of drinking water, the drinking water supply moving forward into the future, and who's responsible for that?
If someone may move, some others may not be. They've got to think about future generations.
Are there any other questions?
And if I may, I will, so I, I was just kind of going off the top of my head. I recall reading in the Lu, the news about BWS filing some sort of claim, I believe for 2.2 billion dollars. Does that sound correct? But I will, I will specifically follow up regarding.
That's just good news that it's 1.2 billion. Okay.
1.2? Okay. I got the two right. Okay.
I have a question. How much was set aside for people that suffered health issues? And are there any people right now reporting how they should by drinking their contaminated diesel fuel water?
So my understanding is that, well, one, I believe that there's multiple lawsuits that have been filed. So I don't know the outcome of those suits. I believe that the entity would be responsible for providing, providing that we can pass would be the federal government. But if you'd like, I can just confirm that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave.
Absolutely. Oh, oh, let me, um, let me just give you these, uh, these links. You can type them into the, okay, I'll stick around for just a moment and then I'll grab that back. Thank you, guys.
Our next representative will be for, I, I understand that Council Chair Tommy Waters and his representative will not be attending, but John came. So Adam, are you here? Is Adam due on, online?
I don't think so.
Okay. Senator Stanley Chang, his representative has been Teresa Ng. I don't see her on our screen today. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Marley, Marley.
Hi.
Hi, sorry. I'm here today to represent Senator Chang.
Oh, absolutely fantastic. Hi, Marley. We haven't met you before.
Oh, hi. Yeah, I'm a new, um, I'm interning with the, this office, but I'm giving the report for today.
Oh, cool. All right. What do you have for us, Marley?
So just a couple of things. You can find the December newsletter for Senator Chang's website here, and I'll post all the links in the chat that I'll be talking about. You can sign up for the housing newsletter here, and Senator Chang recently hosted a conference this month on housing called "The Rise of Social Housing in America", and the recording I'll also put in the chat. And then the legislature is hiring for the 2024 legislative session, and the link to apply is also in the chat. Hopefully, it's sent through.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you have any questions, I can write them down and get them to my supervisor and make sure that they're all answered.
Okay, are there any questions for Senator Chang? Yes, Kevin? Kevin, why don't you come up and speak in the mic? Got to make sure you get exercise.
Yes, actually, I may be moving from a large to an extra-large shirt, so the exercise is very important. Marty, I, I really appreciate the regular flyers that Senator Chang sends regarding housing. He is probably Hawaii's best advocate for housing and innovative solutions. In, in that he was once our consul person, he probably has a unique understanding of the building permit department. Is there any way that he might be able to help Tommy Waters in streamlining that department? Because without the ability to get permits processed in a timely manner, his great ideas are not going to be able to be implemented. And as a, I guess, someone that's struggling to get a permit, I think I'm going to my second year just trying to get an electric, electricity to my nursery, so it's a little frustrating. But trying to streamline the city's permitting department, I realize it's a city issue, but he does have knowledge of that. And for his projects to fly, they're going to need to get permits done. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I will let the office know.
Any other questions for, yes, for the senator? Let's go ahead.
Do any of the representative, the representatives ever show up to these meetings? Like Sam Sloan never missed a meeting in the six years I was on that board. So I just, I'm asking, I don't see a lot of representatives.
Yes, that is something that we are, that we are trying to work on. Kevin, do you want to just tell Bill what we did last year?
Yeah, I, I think so.
I mean, I mean, Bill, that's Bill. I mean.
Yeah, I, I was, I was hoping for an opportunity to, to plug our strawberries and onions. So at, at my great expense, I think it was like 50 bucks, I went to Fluland. We got some strawberries, and I had a beautiful young lady that accompanied me for security purposes. And we, we delivered strawberries to the representatives that showed up on a regular basis. I think the, uh, the scorecard started about the beginning of the legislative session and it ended at the end. So during the session, they were showing up regularly. It might be a little different when we tally things up for the 12-month period since we gave out the strawberries last. But I'm looking, looking forward to doing that again. And I think some people appreciated the strawberries. Yeah, so, and, and I think it was effect. I'm hoping that possibly the neighborhood or board representative, I'm bad at names.
Zoidell.
Zoidell, might be able to share our success with the other neighborhood boards. Because I know Hawaii Kai is just as frustrated, and I'm sure other boards are, but it seemed to be a very inexpensive, effective way to get better participation.
But suggestions are appreciated, but this one was fun. Any other questions for Senator Chang? Okay, bye, Dave. Take care. Okay, thank you very much, Marley, for joining us tonight, and, and our best wishes to Senator Chang. May you all have a, have a very joyful and safe holiday, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, do we have a representative, I mean, a, well, representative for Representative Mark Casham? Okay, he's the guy we need to work. All right. Casey Abe, you are the absolute best. You come every time we have a meeting, and, and we really appreciate you so much. Casey Abe is from the Hawaii Department of Transportation. Hey, Casey, what's that you're showing us?
Yeah, I guess I got an email from Council Chair Tommy Waters' office about there's some delineators that have been knocked down. I know this area is not within your neighborhood board area, but I just wanted to let you know that I caught this. It's, it's delineators that separates the lanes. And I guess some were knocked down, and he had asked the DOT to replace them because I just been witnessing people jaywalking across to the beaches. So I know this area is not within your neighborhood board, but I did refer to my coworker who overs, who goes to this Hawaii Kai neighborhood board. But that's all I have for tonight. You have any questions or concerns?
Do we have any questions for Department of Transportation? Sherry, do you want to, do you think that the marathon issue should be brought up to Casey?
It is a, yes, it's a city and a state thing because it's, it's an agreement between the city and the state. So yes, hopefully Casey Abe could help in, in the management of what's actually happening out there, because it's kind of a zoo, and they're supposed to, the marathon is supposed to have people at every intersection that is impacted by closure on the Makai Ocean side. And they don't. They don't have people there that, that you can, that you, when the police say, oh, no, we, you know, they're all scared, and they say, we can't open up. It's not safe. So then, where's the marathon person? Well, the marathon person isn't there. We'll get him on the phone. We can't get anyone on the phone. And like I said, the orange sign, which tells the police how they can operate, and it gives them this, like, four steps of how to do it. The sign is missing this year. It's not out there. So maybe Casey could get on the phone to the marathon people before Sunday and say, please get that orange sign out there, and let the police know that they are allowed to let residents on the Makai side, the ocean side, exit when there is a gap in the runners.
The walkers.
The, yeah, at this point, they're walkers. You know, after, they, they start running at five, and by, you know, eight o'clock.
And that intersection you're talking about, you're saying that intersection on Cal Highway you're talking about is Kalaniiki or?
Well, that's what you call it. We call it Y, Yeli because that's the Makai side, but it's, yes, Kalaniiki. That's how DOT refers to it as Kalaniiki, but it's the ocean side.
Ocean side, okay.
Send you the picture of the sign that's supposed to be there that isn't. We sent it, we just sent it to John. And, yeah. And we just need to, you know, there should be marathon people there because DOT and DTS, Department of Transportation and Department of Transportation Services, in good faith, have negotiated with Marathon that they're going to do things a certain way, but they're not doing it. So we would hope that you would kind of aid in them in doing what they said they would do many years ago and how they, every year say, of course, they're going to do it. But there's not even enough information in the newspaper to people. I can't believe how many of my residents still go out there and sit at the intersection thinking they're going to be let, let out. They sit there for an hour or two, and they get out, they start walking around, what's going on? Why aren't we being let out? What's going, it's, it's, it's a zoo.
Okay, I'll put my email address in the chat box, and you can email me the picture, and then I can follow up with our maintenance personnel who issues the permit to the city and the, um, marathon.
Okay, but the, but also.
Intersection need to be told the guidelines.
Yeah, as you see, that the trouble is that the sign is important, but it's the police and the marathon people who are supposed to be at that, at, you know, not just ours, it's Kainani and Wailupi and, and down the road, you know, Paiko. They're all blocked. They're all locked in.
Right, so you look, you expect a marathon to have these signs at every intersection, and that's just.
Yeah.
Right now, at ours.
Well, I know, I only know about ours because we fought for it, because we're a, a large community. And, um, but they should be at all the neighborhoods, but right now, this year, that orange sign isn't out there, and it always has been. But there has to be communication to the police that they don't have to be scared, where they always act scared. No, no, it's not safe. We can't, we're, our hands are tied. We can't let anyone out. That's what they've told us last year. We can't let anyone out.
Huge gaps.
And there are huge gaps in the walkers, because, you know, by nine o'clock, they're walking. The runners shouldn't do that race in two hours, and the rest are just walking it. One year, we had gals, cute little girls from a foreign country with backpacks and Mickey Mouse suits on, and they were stopping at McDonald's for hamburgers before they got, I mean, it's cute, but it's not fair to hold it.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. We need to move on. Thank you. Casey, if there's anything you can do to help with, with that intersection, put up a sign. We appreciate it.
And a marathon, and a marathon person, a representative, because the police need to be able to talk, the marathon has to tell them, yes, you can release. Because otherwise, the police.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Casey, Casey, um, did, was there anything else you wanted to report to us?
I know. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, Casey, we wish you a very happy holiday, and I hope you have a chance to relax and take care of yourself.
All right, thank you, and have happy holidays too. Thank you.
Yeah, take care. Okay, bye. Okay, um, so Chris Kramer is, he, Chris, you're the Chair of the Mount Eloua Fish Pond Heritage? Hello, Chris?
Executive Director.
Executive Director. Hello, um, so for those of us, or for those who are new to our neighborhood board and who are in the audience, go ahead and introduce yourself. How are you feeling?
Still on the mend.
Are you getting better?
Um, yep, yep, yep.
You have a picture of yourself you can show us?
I'm trying to share a screen right now, but it's not.
Now we see it.
There you go.
Maybe you'll be in one of the pictures, I imagine, because you're always there helping and running things. So go ahead.
Okay, aloha, everybody. Chris Kramer here with Mount Eloua Fish Pond Heritage Center, and wanted to share our annual update about Kaniwai Spring and the activities happening. Okay, unfortunately, I'm having some technical issues here. You hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's, what's happening with the, oh, here we go. So wanted to just start with sharing our condolences for the honor of Dr. Joe Young. I know he was a part of this board for a long time. He was also the honorary mayor of Chinatown. And he was also, his family ran the, the Mount Eloua Fish Pond, the largest fish pond in all of Hawaii for many years. And so he was, was the kindest man and freely gave of his time and, and knowledge to, you know, the students, and he would pick students on, and our classes down to Chinatown and, and, and share about. And he would pick students on, and, and our classes down to Chinatown and, um, and, and share about the fish ponds. So, we really, um, miss him, so we, yeah, our condolences to the family. This year, we had Auntie Sandra Lamb, and she she surfaced, um, her, actually, her daughter contacted the Mauna Lua Fish Pond Heritage Center, and she grew up at Kaniwai Spring, where the Heritage Center is located. And so she's shared these amazing photos of when she was a young girl in the forties and early fifties, growing up, this is at Kaniwai Spring. This is Auntie Yulani Loahine, the famous pool of dancer. And they're filming in the forties there, right, right at the edge of the fish pond. And, um, so that's been a real neat, um, to have her sharing, and, um, eh, we can share that with the students that come to the Mauna Lua Fish Pond. So we've, we've been having a lot of work with collecting data. Shaminad University has been doing regular data collecting. This, um, this is some data collecting from the Department of Aquatic Resources. They've been doing some regular data collection, um, they're using a DNA, um, EDNA machine, and it can, it, so it reads the different tissues of the different organisms in the spring and fish pond. And this is, uh, one of our interns, Kavina Freitas. We had a lot of, um, different activities, so one of them was low-hollow weaving. We have a lot of different resources that grow at Kaniwai Spring. So, um, it's been neat to see the different groups that come and cultural practitioners. And so, um, here they are, uh, Tahina is gathering some of the, uh, lout to bring back to the, uh, students, and then she is teaching them to weave low-hollowing. Um, here's that, on the left is lowlu thatching, so we have some lowlu trees growing. And they were thatching the holly, so they, and then on the right, we had, um, the, the groups was white dental service that came and did a volunteer day. And they were harvesting some of the red mangrove, and it's a really strong hardwood, so it's not, it's invasive, but it's, it's a very, uh, no useful wood as well, you make walking sticks or other different things. We also had the Waumanala Limo Hui, and a lot of different school groups coming. They were repairing the, um, broken wall, the Kuapah, in, in the, inside Kaniwai Spring, so you can see them, and they, they train at this, they're, they're doing it in Waumanalo, they're doing it at, Kahana, in the fish pond over there, so they're experts at Uau Huu Pahuaku, it's dry stack, stone, um, stone work. And then on the right, we have the students cleaning up the, so they're doing the small work. So it was, it's really great that they came to our community to help, um, because these are really heavy stones, and it's very difficult work. Gotta go inside the water to do it. Um, this is Kai Uihara, he's showing the students, he's, he's, um, showing them how he sews net, and so that's an art that has been, you know, very few practice that today, or have that knowledge. Students were really interested in learning how to sew nets. That was a very useful practice in our area for many, many years. And another, um, highlight this year, we had mauna lua.net, Anne Marie Kirk, and the mural project of showcasing the Ni Holo that used to come and bless this community. Every year, they circle the island from Ula all the way to Laia, and then all the way back. And just, you would have millions of spawning mullet that would come into our community every year. So that's a real good education tool, it's on the walls. So we, we think, on the lua.net for that. And we also worked with, um, Shaminad, so they, their interior design program, and they, other student designers designing the interior for the Heritage Center. So, um, this is one of the concepts that they came up with, and how we can redesign the interior space over there, make it functional for the community. And, um, we're currently putting in, um, grants to do the roof, and, um, so we, we hope those are successful. And, um, we've also, um, been awarded, and we haven't received it yet, but, um, some funding through Senator Schatz, um, Coastal, uh, it's to restore fish ponds. So, we're anticipating that would be a great help for, um, restoration this year. And, um, we're also wanted to give a shout out to Rep. Passion for his years of support of the fish ponds as well. Those are just a few highlights to share, and, uh, we have uh, our website is mauna lua fishpond.org, and we welcome the community to come. And, um, as the Chair mentioned, we have a workday next month on the third Saturday. So, um, yeah, feel free to contact Heritage Center and, um, for those wishing to sign up. And we also welcome the board to come in and participate in a workday as well in the community stewardship that's been ongoing at Kaniwai Spring. So, that's a big update for, um, the board for this year.
Chris, thank you for, for the inspiration that you've been for the community and, and, and they, all you've done to revitalize the fish ponds on the east side, it's just amazing.
I can't take credit myself, but it's a lot of different schools and community groups that each do their, you know, everybody pitches in and does their part, and so, but yeah, that's very kind.
Um, does anyone have a question for Chris? Yes, Shelley?
I do. Would we get more information on the community participation opportunity? On, what is that, January twentieth? I think the times, that sort of thing, where are?
Yep, yep, so if you can, um, we, we do have limited signup, so, um, we, we have, um, the city caps it at thirty, so we have a limited, um, spaces available. So, if you're interested, please let us know, and usually it, it's for this coming workday, we anticipate it'll, parking will be at Holy Trinity Church in the back.
Um, let's see, so.
At nine to eleven.
For the, for the, um, community workday. Uh, I don't know that we have a link right now. Uh, Chris, are you, are you using the website, or are you?
No, we, it's all just through contacting the email, um, to sign up.
Okay, so, um, mauna lua fishpond.org?
Fishponds plural at gmail.
Okay, use that one, use the second one, okay. All right. I'm gonna plan on being there. Hey Chris, um, take care and, and hope you feel better soon and, and can enjoy the holidays and, and get out and check the cora to the cora, the back of Wailupi are, are doing well.
Oh, okay, I will. Okay.
Take care, Chris, thank you.
Alright.
So, closing announcements, the next, our next meeting will be in February, so, um, we recess January, so the first Thursday of the month, which will be February first, um, we'll meet here um, at six thirty. And, um, yeah, in the meantime, does, does anyone have any, any business before we adjourn? Do we have any closing business?
Oh. Because we were having problems with the, the drainage panel and the outlet that goes into Wailei Beach Park. And so we just wanted to be updated, we've been contacting him and.
You're on Wailei Beach Street or?
Yeah, yeah.
They, they had, and they bulldozed the front, the, that, uh, of the, the, um, in front of the Kuleo Beach Park, they tried, they did try to open it up, but that didn't help much as far as, or it didn't help. I mean, so, you can see the, uh, drainage panel going up and down, oh, just.
For this, oh, yeah.
Or just, it's, it's, it's an Iwakai that's moving the water down.
Yeah, and. Well, the rain helped.
Yeah.
The rain also.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's going for the rain.
So, and we live at the end where it grows.
Where the start.
Yeah. Contact with him, I just wanted to.
I answered.
He asked, Sherri?
Yeah, Sherri's got a.
Sherri, um, do you have a question, or Rachel, do you have something you'd like to bring up before we adjourn?
I just wanted to, Stephanie's emailing you a picture of the magical orange sign, and I was hoping you could email it to everybody on the board, so they can see what this magic orange sign looks like. We've already sent it to John Nucci and Casey Abe, but that's for the Marathon. So if we, Stephanie is sending it to you, can you send it?
Chris, can you stop sharing, sorry?
What? Sorry, what?
Okay. I'll have to wait till I get home.
That's, that's okay, just, that's fine, I just wanted the, for the board to be able to see it.
Oh, is there a way to her?
Um, she can share.
Share?
How, how does, how does that work, on the chat?
Share screen?
Share screen.
Share screen.
Doesn't know how to do it.
I haven't gone. Just emailing.
Well, email it to you, Clarissa?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that, thank you.
Okay, you guys, um, wanted to wish every, okay, well, we will adjourn after. I wish everyone a meli kaliki maka and, and a haoli, haoli maka hiki ho. May you all have a, have a safe and joyous and, and healthy holidays. And I'm just tickled to see you all here, and, you know, look forward to working with you in the new year.
Are we allowed to say Merry Christmas?
Yes, you are.
Thanks for being there, Clarissa.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Scotland Lou would say, here's looking at your kilt, laddie.
Okay, that's wonderful, thank you for closing for us. Um, the, so the Kuleo Kalaniiki Neighborhood Board is now adjourned for nine, two thousand twenty-three. And thank you all for being part of it.